When this process was being presented, I spoke to Mr. Sanchez and I asked him to please, please include council members. Please include council members so that, once they get this information, they can come back to the council and say, "Listen, this is good for the city of Plainfield. This is what we ..." I mean, I understand we can't do the negotiating, but we are the governing body. And we set the tone for the city of Plainfield. I understand that the mayor have his rights to select whomever he wants, as well as his cabinet members. But I just felt like it should have been a little bit more transparency in this development. And because there was no transparency, this is the reason why we're at this point right now. To me, it seems as if this was shelved down our throats. I mean, I understand that there was presentations after presentation after presentations, and I do believe it started on South Avenue at the fret days. I think that was the first start of this project. But again, at this time, I'm speaking for Council President Virgil Rivers. I just can't see giving a 30-year pilot. You know, when I started doing my research on pilots that have been given thus far, it aches my body, but this tempers, we still have a pile on that tempers, and there's been no development over there. They also came before the council and gave this huge presentation as to what was going to be done, and none of that was done. So this is my reasons. We're not saying, I'm not saying that this development shouldn't take place, I'm not saying that this development might not be done. But what I am saying at this time, as I spoke to other council members, I'm not comfortable with a 30-year pilot. I understand the time sensitivity, how sensitive it is for you guys, but at that time, if you knew this was going to be time-sensitive, two months ago, there should have been a meeting with, sit down with each individual council member. Sit down with each individual council member and present this to them so that the council members can come back and say, "Listen, this is something that Plainfield needs. This is something that Plainfield needs." I mean, it's beautiful. The concept is amazing, but a 30-year pilot, I just don't feel comfortable with that. And that's just where I'm at. Now, we'll go to other council members, and we can voice their opinion as to why, but we have to look at the fact that we just can't say we're going to have, let me see, individuals that are renting this apartments with alternative lifestyles. This is what I was told. Individuals that probably would be renting this apartment that are, you know, going back and forth to New York. Eventually, everybody gets love. They end up getting married, and here comes children, and then here come children. Again, as Mr. Campbell said, are we going to build another school? So this is just where I'm at with it. But again, I'm not saying, and no disrespect to the city administrator, but you understand that this is a council meeting. We set the agenda, and all I was trying to do is get through the council meeting. We have council members, as I was told, that can try to walk this on. But I think it's disrespectful for the administration to try to walk the item on the agenda, when the agenda has already been set. We have to be more respectful of each other's title, and that's just where I stand right now.
Council President, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, first, I actually, I don't think that, I wouldn't take any disrespect from, you know, any ask of us to put it back on. I would like to ask the governing body to reconsider these ordinances, to place them down. But I just want to say as well that, you know, this kind of development, you know, has not come to Plainfield before. This is $50 million investment that, you know, it's private investment. Mr. Edwards was speaking before about the Public Housing Authority on the west end of town. This is, that's public, this is a private development of market-grade apartments. I live in that area, and I pay almost that rate. I would love to live in a place like this, but I think that with regard to the council that we hired to look at the numbers and so forth, we passed that resolution a while ago. We hired the development, you know, the council. We also passed a resolution to find the area in need of development. We've taken all of these steps. I know that the negotiations, from what Mr. Sanchez said, were tough negotiations, but we were able to get quite a lot. A 30-year pilot is standard for this kind of development, and I think that, when you think about what happens, if there's, if this development does not go through, as he mentioned, over the same period of time, we would maybe collect about $3 or so million dollars. With this in place, we'll collect, I think it was $10.3 million. That's three times as much. That will help our city. We want to be thinking of the future. I think that, you know, when I, when I drive down South Avenue and down North Avenue and Garwood, and I see all the development, I see the kinds of shops that are opening, you know, amenities and those kinds of things, that's what will assist us in terms of continuing the commercial development. There's, you know, other development going on down, farther down, South Avenue. The West Front Street, and I talked to Council President very briefly about this last week, that Dunkin' Donuts that we have on, you know, Front and Clute, that's like one of the spurs to development. So if people see that this kind of development is working successfully here in Plainfield, and this infusion of money will enable the other properties in the downtown, in South Avenue, on West Front Street, on East Second Street, people will say, "Wow, these folks put this kind of, you know, faith and money into Plainfield." You know, they want to do the same thing. This is how cities transform. This is how we, you know, when we put together the transit-oriented development, the Cayman, that's what this kind of thing is for. People will spend their money in town, you know, these, you know, sort of, you know, ideas that they're only going to go to New York and come home and not, you know, use any of the amenities in our town, or go to Wendy's, or go to Dairy Queen, or go to, you know, downtown pharmacy, et cetera. I think that's all just conjecture. And I think that there's nothing wrong with it. We need mixed use, we need mixed income for our city to survive and to actually excel. And the other thing that concerns me, you know, we know that time is of the essence in having to take all the time to put together, you know, all of those properties and to get everyone on board. You know, a lot of work went in for that. So for us to, you know, possibly lose this development because those contracts will expire, we're going to be sitting here, what other developer is going to come here with a $50 million project, or even a $30 million project? If they think that we're not moving forward development, I would just urge you all to rethink this, and let's please put this on the agenda. It's not about a particular ward or South Avenue, because the money goes to the entire city, just like the taxes that are paid, you know, in the downtown or in, you know, West Front Street are also paying for the whole city. So I really think that, you know, I'm, I think last week I mentioned, I'd sit in my stomach, I think it's really urgent that we pass this, that we reintroduce it, and that we get it passed. Because if the developer is unable to hold on to those properties, or extend those contracts, and walks away, then where are we? We're the council that said no to $50 million development that would give us, over the same course of time, over $10 million. Or if it doesn't happen, we'll only get $3 million. So I really think that it's critical. Mr. Sanchez has been very upfront about the urgency attached to this project, and I think that it would be a wonderful legacy for us as a council to have been the council that pushed this through for the first time in the history of Plainfield over the past 30 years.
Council President, please.
Yes.
I just want to note that Councilman Storch had requested that, when this conversation come up, that he be reached via telephone.
Absolutely.
I have reached out to Councilman Storch, and he's on speakerphone right now.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak to Thursday?
Absolutely.
I think that there is no question that we all want redevelopment. And again, I will say again, I said this to the mayor, I'll say it to his staff, the council is an entity that you have to work with. And to continue, this has nothing to do with the gentleman from the redevelopment. You know, I had planned to go visit what he said for me today, and I'm very, you know, interested and think that the ideas are wonderful. But again, we're back to this same scenario. And I'm not going to say it's political, but it is. You cannot continue to think that we're just going to blindly support what you say at the time you say it, and not investigate, not be clear. There's, there seems to be a misconception of this administration, that they are top-down only. This is a democracy. The council is, has advice and consent. More importantly than that, we're all citizens of the same town. You should want to have community input and involvement in whatever we do. And not at the last minute, or then you want us to rubber stamp even a great idea. If you understand that it has to go through channels, and one of those channels has to do with the council, then it behooves you to stop doing this. Stop using your so-called authority and trying to push it down the throats of the council. It is not going to work. We're going to continue to say no, because you're not working with us. And then certain people in the audience, who we all know are connected to this particular mayor, you come and you do the same thing. You come up, "Please support, please support." Well, I'm not in your private parties, I am not at your meetings. I work and operate as a city council person, and I come here. And I do not like that the public is not invited and involved, and particularly the city council. I said to this mayor, the presence of his staff, "You have to count your votes." That's pragmatic politics. And I am not going to sit here and pretend that, "Oh, no, it's separation of powers" and all this foolishness. We know about separation of powers, but what about you getting people's input so that we can make intelligent decisions? These people, I feel bad for them because they're professionals, and you've come and we, you have nothing to do with our little problems with each other. And I'm so sorry, but we cannot do this. And I am not for one, going to continue to play this little game. My husband wasn't there a few, many years ago, but he always said, "You got to count the votes." And if you aren't willing to count the votes, and you're going to play this little game that I'm in charge, and you're all going to have to do it, and then you're going to get people on the council who are part of your team to say, "Well, if we don't do it, then we're going to mess up Plainfield's future." That is a lie. That is a lie. And I'm sick of this. If you want to work with us, and you want to work with you all in the interest of Plainfield, well, let's act like it. And I'm not playing this game anymore, okay? If you want to, "I want to do this," sure, it's a wonderful concept and idea. We said it a whole year ago. We said, "You got to involve the council. You got to involve members of the council, get their input, et cetera. Then you wait till the last minute again, and you do it to us, and we're not going to do it." There are other issues and questions that we may want to get from our constituents. One has to do with the length of the, in lieu of taxes. And number two, what about the school district? How do you know that we're going to get people who have alternative lifestyles to go over to South Avenue? How do you know that we're not going to get people who are on, what shall I say, people who may have a Section 8 housing and can afford $1,400 or $1,200, or whatever it is? Are you going to say, "No, you can't come in"? Who's to say that lifestyles, we want to go to yoga classes? Who's to say that Plainfielders even want to do the things that are promoted in here unless it fits this community? Now, if you're going to invite other folk, who are we talking about? And I'm going to be very specific. You're talking about white or black professionals? Are we talking about gay couples? Are we talking about couples with husband and wife? I mean, what are we talking about? And why is that the way we should go? And we don't do that on the basis of what we think. We have to have input from other people who are in the town. And what do we do about those people who are poor? Affordable housing? We don't want them to be in these apartments? I mean, so we've got to look at these kinds of things, and so when it's time to do this piece, we're all together. And I have a problem that we keep doing this, and you're going to, you're going to say to us, and then you insult us, Mr. Silly Administrator, by coming to a council meeting and trying to push your way in terms of getting us to put things on the agenda, which has nothing to do with you. If my colleague had wanted to put something on the agenda, well, he or she is a council person, then he can do that. Not you, and not the mayor. How disrespectful is this? And enough is enough. We're not going to play that game. And you have to count the votes. Everybody doesn't always vote the same here, so you have to say, "It's not my control over anybody or the council president," but let's stop this. Let's stop this. If we want to work together, and if this project has to go, and you need to renegotiate some stuff, it has nothing to do with the gentleman who is wonderful today. It has to do with us, the mayor, and his staff, and us. I mean, that's how we want to get to a win-win. And a win-win is, has to do with the people of Plainfield, but it also has to do with the governing body. We are responsible for making informed decisions. I am not, I can't use the excuse that, "Well, we have to get it done, so I have to go along with what they say." No. I have to see, how is it going to benefit our community? And I don't see it yet. And I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to be rushed, because you had a whole year to get us involved, in whatever way you wanted to, formally or informally. Nothing was done. Nothing was done. So I'm having a problem, and I'm willing, I'm willing to spend some more time on this, really. There's no closed door. You don't close doors when it comes to things that are going to benefit your city. I'm willing, but I'm not playing this game. I'm not playing this game with you. And so, let's meet again, let's see what we need to do, let's get to the win-win. I'm going to go visit some of the things this gentleman said, even if I don't, if this doesn't happen, I think in the future it should happen, so I need to be informed. But I'm tired of this. I'm tired of this game. And the mayor's not here, because I would say it to him, and he can play games with me, and he wants to, but I know the real deal. We're both Democrats. How did he get to where he is if he didn't do practical politics? So don't play games as if we're naive and stupid. I know how it works. Therefore, when it comes to the public, yes, I appreciate, I think it was one of the, oh, that said, we should, when you do presentations, and that's not this gentleman's problem, that's what we should have told him, make sure you do it so the public can have their input. Now, that was, he was just doing what he thought was the right thing to do, and I appreciate that. But yes, we do have to make sure that the public is informed. That's our responsibility. He was our guest. So, but I do agree with that. So this administration cannot continue to think that they are dictatorship, and they're based on their plan through the planning board, that that means that's the only thing that's going to be done in this town. And lastly, when the gentleman said from the fourth ward, that what about the redevelopment in the fourth ward? And the answer was, "Well, that's based on the federal government," because that's the, no, that's the wrong answer. That's the wrong answer. And if we, as a, as a council, want to make sure there's affordable housing, just because the mayor said he didn't want any affordable housing, because we have enough of that, no, we're the other half of that entity. And if we feel people who can't afford houses, that should bring some affordable housing in, whatever we do, then that should be included. So that's, that's my point. Let us not get carried away with what we think and who we think, what power we think we have. We have got what's called negotiations. We have to negotiate with one another. I want a win-win, yeah. I do. I want a win-win. I'd love to see something like this in Plainfield. I really would. But we got to, but we got to consider all the other things that were not considered here. And that's what keeps happening here. We keep doing this. If the board agenda needs to be included, let's include them. If someone's, I don't care, let's include them. Well, what's the, what are we doing here? You know? Unless, unless tell the public the truth, unless somebody's making some money under the table. That's why you want to rush. And I'm not saying you are, but I know how the game works. And I don't care, I don't want anything. I'm retired. I want to help Plainfield, that's all I want. And I'm not suggesting, sir, that you're doing anything illegal, please, I understand that. I'm just saying to myself and to you out loud, be careful. Not you, but us, be careful. Okay? So I'm done, but that's, that's about the redevelopment. I'm going to continue to talk until let's get to the place where we're winning. And then lastly, I do want to reiterate about Julian Bond. If many of you that may not know, Julian Bond has been to Plainfield more than one time. And of course, my late husband in the eighties would have him here quite a bit. But I do thank you, Dr., for mentioning that his passing is really going to be missed. Personally, we knew him, I knew him, and do feel that we have lost an icon in the civil rights movement, and has had his influence here and friends here in the city of Plainfield. So thank you very much for, for it, Julian. And on a personal note, thank you so much, and about my son. Straight Outta Compton was a number-one movie hit this weekend, and we had, I think David Muddford wrote a nice blog, Straight Outta Plainfield, we got somebody who's in there. So the young people have been affirmed, and they've been passing it around Facebook, that, "I'm Marcos Taylor's from Plainfield," so that's my son. So I'm very, very proud of his accomplishments here in the city of Plainfield.
Thank you. And again, to council members, because if council members are not included in this, there is no way that we are going to be truly informed as to what is happening in this pilot. So, I mean, I gave that suggestion to you a couple months ago, before this was actually put before us. As I said before, this is an excellent project, excellent project. Number one thing he said that caught my eyes, is everybody know I'm an animal lover, when he said there's going to be a doggy park. We don't have a doggy park in Plainfield, but there's doggy parks all over the state of New Jersey, where other dogs mean other dogs. But this, I'm not comfortable at all with this 30-year pilot, and I am too going to take you up on your offer to go into South Orange and the other areas and look at your development. But I would really strongly suggest that you meet with Mr. Sanchez and have Mr. Sanchez to reach out to, this is our finance chair, Councilwoman Oliver, and sit down with council members and, you know, try to renegotiate this pilot and come up with a win-win, because council members, it's a must, that we be included in the process.
Council President, I'll be there. Councilman Storch.
Okay.
No, I think that she might realize her mind.
We're going to step online after Mr. Storch speaks, we're going to step outside in the room and let you come back.
Councilman Storch, you have the floor.
Thank you. Really, everybody out of town, but calling in for the two sentences out there for the ordinances. For some of these selections, a motion hasn't been made on either one of these, but there hasn't been, there hasn't been a motion to the table either.
There has not been a motion at this time from a member of the council to add these two ordinances to the agenda.
I move that we put the pilot agreement for this on the agenda.
Fair enough. Before I say.
Now, second. CNN motion fails.
The motion failed.
Okay, thank you. I'm signing out.
I just wanted to say, in our French team, this program, I think it's an excellent program. I believe that this administration has been very disrespectful towards the council, but haven't even said that. I mean, he does interfere with two members of this council, but not the other council members. But even in lieu of that, I think this is an excellent program, excellent, an excellent project. And I'm listening to our directive development, and also, I haven't done some research on pilot programs. I know it is the norm for a 30-year pilot, and I am in agreement getting this program off the ground. I think we need to have as many meetings as possible to do whatever we can to get this, to get this project off the ground. I think it's a good project, even in spite of the disrespect from some members of this administration.
Madam President, I, I, I'll take responsibility. Maybe I should approach the board sooner. We're at this two years. There's, I won't bore you with the details, but there's everything from environmental testing to geotech testing to construction drawings, to fiscal impact, to development and redevelopment agreements, and escrows that are posted with the town. Yes, there's twelve properties that we've assembled that all had different trigger dates, starting with the first one in October. Is there, if there's anything that I can do to get in front of this board, to make a presentation, if there's any material that I can supply, I, we're supposed to be on for Thursday's agenda for the planning board. Without you moving the pilot, I don't know where that stands. Whether we should even continue with planning. I'm emailing architects, because we are shoving down the CDs. We're at that point. Again, I will take full responsibility for not informing you, but when you go through a redevelopment process, especially when we presented to the council, moved this motion, I, as a developer, felt that you've been informed. When you've engaged the professional to review the pilot and numbers and confirm what we're saying in this draft, I just have to assume that the council has been informed. If there's anything that I can do, if there's any material that I can present, if there's a willingness to appear, come to the planning, the planning board meeting on Thursday, and you said notice, we did notice, so I think we followed the proper procedure, both with the redevelopment, the pilot, and the site plan. If there's anything I can do to make you comfortable with the project, moreover, with pilot, you need to let me know. I plead to you that we are under time constraints. I do not want to shove anything down anyone's throat. Ms. Taylor, Councilwoman Taylor, excuse me. There is no wrongdoing here. I've been on this for two years, so for me, it's not, it hasn't been shoving down the throat. It's been, it's been a very difficult process. It's been, develop the plans. I believe in August, the redevelopment was affirmed. So we've been a year at developing plans. We've had, I don't want to bore you again with the details, but from, we're buying dry cleaners. You can only imagine what's, what's there. It's, it's been a very difficult process. So, Madam President, I, if there's anything that I can do to better inform you, make a presentation, I know, I know the disrespect of the gentleman who said that I can make a power point. The planning board, we've had, I mean, we've had a number of professionals testify. If I can bring them to you, and if that, that would help, I'll do whatever it needs to be done with.
Thank you so much.
Again, I'll take responsibility. I just assume that when you pass resolutions, I have to believe that you've been informed and have the material. Sorry.
Thank you.
Council President, we meant no disrespect to the city council from the side of the administration. We, like the developer, would like to do anything possible to move this forward. If you have any suggestions at this juncture, I'd be more than happy to talk with you about this later on, and see if we can structure something. Even if you would like to call a special meeting to address this issue, or whatever other avenue you would like to use to get this moving forward, we, we understand that we needed some, you know, there were some affordable housing issues that council, councilwoman brought up. We have looked at those things. We have looked at everything about this project. It's a process, and we're not sure at what junction we should have brought you into the process. It should have been when, you know, the engineers were, were taking, getting assessments, or when the architects were doing drawings, but it was our intent, it was always our intent, to make sure that the city council was But it was our intent, it was always our intent, to make sure that the city council was informed of this, in this project, and the development of it. It was my understanding that the council was aware of the project roughly a year ago, and we were meeting down on South Avenue. But not the details, but of course, of, of the project. So, at, at this juncture, since we do not have this discordance, which, by the way, um, you would still have like a month or two to get answers to your questions if you decide to put discordance on, because this would be the first reading, you would have a second reading, and of course, a hearing to, to address this thing. The, uh, the city administration would be available along with the developer to answer your questions and concerns the council may have.
Thank you. I do believe that it was, um, I mean, it was last month, the month prior to that, that I informed Mr. Sanchez that it would be in his best interest if he would, uh, reach out to, uh, Councilwoman Tolliver to bring her in on this process, being that she served on the finance committee, I said in the meeting, at the council meeting. I said that would help move this project forward. And also, uh, as Mr. Sanchez, I do believe when we hired the redevelopment council, was there anyone, was there any developer in mind for this project? And Mr. Sanchez said there wasn't a developer in mind. So at that point, we should've brought council members in. We have to be a little bit more transparent with each other, so, so that we don't get to this point. That, that, I mean, we're, we're, we're a rock and hard place right now. And council members, along with myself, do not feel like we have been informed with enough information. Now, there might've been, been some council members that had the information. But myself, along with Councilwoman Tolliver, or Councilwoman Jones, or Councilwoman Taylor, as I spoke to them, wasn't informed with all the information. Is that correct?
I got, I got more information tonight.
You got more, yes, tonight, we got it tonight. And I got it a little earlier today. So...
Is there, is there anything that I can put together and forward directly to you?
To all council members, I like to get it to all council members. Um, you can, yes, you can, um...
If, if, if you're willing and, and would like a presentation, then just let me know, and I will bring my full team here.
Okay.
Yes, well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but, but since everyone else is coming, and we destroyed, I have to. Um, we want to move this forward, but this project is like a newly buying a house. You're not, this, it would be like someone new buying a house, never went out before. Um, you have more knowledge about, uh, development than the council has right now. Um, what I would like to see is, what I'm not so sure about is the pilot. I understand all that, I understand the thirty-year agreement and all of that. What I would like to see is, what, what, what neighboring municipalities have done as far as a big win's given to this type of development. Uh, you said you've done numerous projects. Um, I'm sure this isn't your first pilot project. Um, if we could get a little bit more information on, you should be willing to share with us if, if you could, um, how that went. I think that's where, and I'm speaking for myself, where we are a little concerned. We know, we heard about the ten percent, and that is, Mr. Sanchez says it will elevate each year the taxes. Um, I think we just need a little bit more information. Presentation we heard tonight, it's pretty much what we heard today, we're a little bit more extension to it. But I think we want to be responsible, council, we are being responsible for the citizens that know even less than we do. Um, we're not here to shut you down, 'cause I think that would be the wrong thing to do. I know about architect, and how long it takes, I've had some projects that had to come to the planning board, and this and that, so I know it's been a long time. But we need more information about this pilot project. It should've been brought to us, I feel, a little bit sooner. We should've been, uh, strong-fed, for lack of a better word, because it's something new to us. And it's something that we should've understood completely. I consider myself just as smart as anyone in here, a little bit better, depending on what we're talking about. This is your expertise. You probably don't know too much about my expertise. And in all due respect, we need more information. We understand you're up against time and schedule. Um, I would love to see the project, as I said to you earlier, yeah, give me a pardon. And I'm sure there's a lot of citizens in the town that would be interested in moving into something like this. I think it's a great idea. But I think where the dilemma is with the council is, we wasn't given the information in a timely manner where we could digest it. When you go to buy property somewhere, the information's given to you, you know, time is over, there's something you don't understand, you have a timely manner to get to, whatever it is that you need to get to, so that you understand, so when both parties sit down, there's a great understanding there. Um, so I'm speaking for myself, I feel maybe for my colleagues. If we can get some more concrete information specifically on this pilot, I'm not worried about what you know, Bill, I see that. But it's the pilot that we're concerned about. We need to go from step A, like you did with the administration. We need to do that with us as well, so we can get a better understanding.
Councilwoman Tolliver, not because they're here. Uh, you have, your firm, your, your city has chosen the probably number-one redevelopment council in New Jersey. No disrespect, disrespect, no disrespect to any other law firm. But the law firm, nine minutes Scotland, they are as good as it gets when it comes to redevelopment pilot. That firm and I have been on opposite ends now on, on a number of pilots. Actually, this could be their, their pilot, and, and, and specifically Jennifer, you, from the, the nine minutes Scotland, excuse me. Uh, she's corrupt, and she actually wrote the redevelopment, and she wrote the pilot. I apologize, I have to take responsibility for not informing you. I just, again...
You're so bright.
So if, you know, Jennifer's not here, and she actually wrote the pilot, if, if, if there's something that I can do, 'cause we put up, yes, we're to pay her, uh, for, on behalf of the city, if there's something that we can do to get you the information. But again, it's, it's nine minutes Scotland, they're the best of the best. You hired one of the top financial guys to oversee the pilot and the numbers. I mean, we went through, um, a process. If there's anything I can do to make you feel more comfortable, and Ms. Taylor, uh, Councilwoman Toll, Councilwoman Taylor, I apologize. There's nothing here going on where anyone's wanna jam anything down your throat. I just want everyone to be comfortable. Right? And if, again, if there's something I can do, I'll take responsibility. But at this hour, I'm, I, I, I'm pleading that you, you consider, you consider, um, maybe with the administrative, city administrators, that maybe not, uh, placing it on the agenda, maybe tabling it, so I can prepare something for you, or have some kind of, create some kind of open dialogue with who, who you're finding Scotland, your own lawyer.
So it's nothing to tell you. It's not gonna be too... It didn't move from the agenda last week. But I believe that the council members will be reaching out to you. I do have your card, I think. Uh, we have your card, and we're gonna be reaching out to you, because I see...
No, I don't want to give you more of your card.
Let me just say this to you. I see the distress. I do, I see, and I think this is a great project, the Plainfield. And I, I believe that you just got caught in...
I got it.
Yeah.
But look, I don't want to, it takes eleven to call. And I know you, you all have jobs.
We have all the time in the world, 'cause this is what we get paid to do.
If there's anything I can do, anything at all, uh, what is it? Not, let me fly my architect up from Virginia again. Uh, but if there's anything I can do to come here with, with my planners, anything, make a presentation for you, we'll, we'll on PowerPoint, whatever it takes, okay?
So if there was, um, sorry, if there was contracts, blueprints, these are all the things, step by step, council should see. No one does anything, and then you get to the end, and you just say, you know, that the things, they be waiting, dump sign on the line, did you read the blueprint? And that's why I feel like I didn't give us the blueprint. So if we can just back up a little bit, and, and, and bring everything back to the council about the pilot, so we all are in full understanding of what we're getting into, because we're signing our name on the pilot line.
I will take your direction. You said someone's, whatever direction you want for me, I will get it done, I promise you that. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much. You have more to quote?